Silver Falls School Board Order, welcome our guest this evening. Please join me if you'd like to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is consent agenda. Owen had a question on item B, so I told him we go ahead and put that at the end of the agenda. So, we have a motion for the consent agenda minus item B.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda minus item B.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? All's in favor, signify the same eye.
Five.
Aye. Opposed? What do you care? All right, go ahead and invite our student reps up, Jordan and Austin.
All right, I will begin today, going over the sports as usual, and Jordan will pick it up. The baseball team is doing well this year with a record of 11 wins and 17 losses. They have their first playoff game this Thursday at Bend High School. They're looking forward to the challenging team and hope to pull out a win. The softball team's next game is this Thursday against Marshfield. They have a record of 16 wins and seven losses. Marshfield, with a record of 11-10, will likely be a strong competitor, and they're, again, hopeful for the win. The track team is still going strong, even after a continued loss of members. They will go to Willamette this Wednesday and Thursday for the district meet. They're hoping to take their strongest members to the state meet in two weeks. The tennis team has had a good season, both boys and girls. Members of the girls' and boys' teams both have enjoyed tennis this year. The girls qualified everyone in their first round in that district. Sadly, only one person made it past the second, and that's it for sports.
Okay, so now we're clubs. Okay, so ASB is now preparing for spring week, which will be held from May 1st to May 25th. Highlights of the week include powder puff football game on Wednesday and the talent show carnival and spring form dance on Friday. ASB elections were this past week. Annie Bradbury was elected next year's ASB president, and Lily Carides will be the ASB vice president. National Honor Society will be inducting new members this month. Inductees must be sophomores who have at least a commutative GPA of 3.5 for their past three semesters and demonstrate service and leadership throughout their extracurricular activities. Interact Club's next event will be helping volunteer at this month's Main Madness on May 19th. The event is at Pine Street Gym and will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. FBLA was very successful at this year's state leadership conference. Numerous members have completed and placed. Richard Miller took first in word processing and will be moving to the national level. Speech and Debate concluded another strong season this year, as they took third place at state three weeks ago. This is the fifth consecutive year that the team has placed in the top five. Theater finished the year strong with the production of the annual one acts this past weekend. Next on their agenda is theater awards night and showcase on Friday, May 25th. And numerous FFA members placed at the recent state convention. Caitlin Tawry and Thiler Unger are two FFA members who will move on to the national level. The FFA awards banquet is planned for May 24th.
That's all ready up there. Any questions?
Not a question, but I just wanted to tell you guys, excellent job on Mr. SHS this year. I think it's the best one I've ever been to. It was really good. How much did you raise?
Ooh, I want, oh.
Was it around $10,000?
It was like around $10,000.
That's awesome.
Yeah, a huge amount.
Excellent job. It was really, really well done tonight. This time, really well.
Yeah, they did awesome.
Good job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, do you want to wave then?
Thank you. Okay, we open it up here for visitors. Would someone like to address the board this evening? Are you ready?
Maybe the next one.
Okay. All right, move on to discussion items. Any discussion items this evening you want to bring up? Now we'll move on to administrator and staff reports. Andy, the 2012-13 meal prices and the long-range facility planning report.
A couple of items. You've got an attachment in your packet with recommended meal price increases for next year. It's based upon reflection of the current food services report and continue to operate in a deficit, even though the deficit is getting smaller. Both Jan Hoffman and I are recommending that lunch prices increase by 10 cents for next year. It's about a 3.5% increase, and I think it's warranted under the circumstance. I gave you a summary of the breakfast and lunch prices, what they would be, and I think it's necessary under the circumstance, especially since it continues to be, and I know has always been a goal of the board to maintain this program in a self-sufficient fashion. And this will get you there, as far as I'm concerned. You did raise prices by 5 cents last year. It's a minimal increase that you hadn't seen for a few years prior. So I think this is warranted, and it does get us to more of an average level across the state.
Is it enough?
Well, I think that's worth discussion. I mean, if you raise it 15 or even 20 cents, of course, it's going to eliminate the deficit very quickly. But then, I think, as a board, you'd have to balance that with the potential impact by folks who are purchasing the lunches. Our lunch prices are not exorbitantly priced, but they, you know, they are in line currently, or at least will be at 10 cents with the majority of the neighboring school districts in our area.
And is this list you gave us, is that this year's prices?
Correct.
So they may go up also.
That's right.
I think there's many other districts, though, that subsidize their lunch program as well. So does this keep us in line, in step to have a self-sufficient and keeps ahead of some of the anticipated increase in prices for fuel and food itself?
The CPI over the last year was just under 3%, and so this is about a 3.5% increase. So from that perspective, Wally, it will. And again, I'm relying upon Jan, who's crunching the numbers with this, and she's saying this will get us in the black.
You can always look at it at a later date if it's not enough.
You've gone through a many year.
Yeah, but even so, not to jump it up too quickly, I think is important, too, for families.
Yeah, and that's a good point, too, Julie, is that you, as a board, can choose to increase it just routinely every year. There have been multiple years where we've done nothing. The percentage of late stayed flat. So that's not out of the question to consider by any means. And the second is related to the long-range facility planning. The facilities committee did meet, I believe, their last time a couple of weeks ago, and they have developed some draft recommendations for your consideration at your June 11th meeting. They're still in draft form because there's some electronic communication going on, just to flesh them out and make sure that any last minute, or excuse me, any last detail specific to those or interpretation of the recommendations are taken care of before they're made unknown to you and to the general public. At that meeting, there will be an interpretation report presented by a couple of the committee members, and I'll offer some information as well to accompany the recommendations that come to you. Keep in mind that the recommendations are just that. They're recommendations. You're the one that takes action on the recommendations, so you'll get them with the intent of reviewing them, obtaining additional community input, spending a work session, maybe a couple of work sessions talking about these, having folks come to you, maybe, or provide information to you in the form of community surveys, maybe even a telephone survey, other information that would be very, really beneficial for you to have a comprehensive view of these facility recommendations. So I think the committee has done a commendable job of really reaching out to a breadth of considerations for facilities that maybe we haven't gone to before, especially around curriculum, technology, instructional practices, equity in instruction, and a variety of topics that are slightly controversial, if not more, and have proven to be valuable conversations to have. Wally and Owen, you've been part of those conversations. I think it's been a good practice this year. We'll have more to come on the June 11th meeting.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
And a quick announcement just for the general public and to remind you, as a result of Memorial Day, don't forget we're meeting next month for your work session, not the following month.
Okay. Jan's not here. We do have the financial report and the food service report in your packet. Andy, I have one question. If you look on page 3, I guess it'd be, on percent remaining, Mark Twain's down to 8%. It looks a lot of stuff for everybody else. Is that a typo or something?
No, my sense is that's not a typo. That's not subject to carryover retention. So I, Dandy, can you help chime in on that?
Sure. So what Jan tells me, it's just that's certain as well, is that that has to do with the maintenance project boiler system, and that that's not, then, the monies that district level have not been released into the Mark Twain's budget because they've signed off on the, so.
So we're gonna backfill some funds back into it? Is that what I'm hearing?
I guess so. It's my understanding it is taken out of our building allocation, but it really hasn't been given to us yet because we don't know what the final cost of the project are.
And we have invoiced the ESD for those dollars, and I can assure you we haven't received the dollars yet, but we will.
I was also gonna ask about charter schools and why those percentages are 11%, when the rest of them are roughly 30%.
Yeah, I think the charter schools are a different beast, Owen, because the charter schools are given, so the front loaded with dollars throughout the year. And so, the percent that you see right now shouldn't be any different than on June 30th. They're very close, where the other accounts will continue to diminish over the year, over the months.
Any other questions? All right, with that, go ahead and invite Dandy up to tell us about Mark Twain.
So knowing that it's been a period of time since I last came to you, trying to keep track of all the great things that have happened at Mark Twain in the last five or six months, I have been keeping a running list of things that we've been doing, and I'm only gonna highlight a few of those, but then, of course, be more than happy to answer any questions or clarify anything for you. The first category that we're looking at would be fundraisers. That was not in response to our 8% left in our budget. We had anticipated that we would need some money for some additional items, and so we did a Figaro's night, and that money went to pay towards light bulbs for our overhead projectors, the in-focus projectors. They cost quite a bit of money, and we had not necessarily budgeted for those, knowing that the lifespan of those is about three years, so almost every single one of them went out this year. The box tops, thanks to Chris Oster, we've been doing a very aggressive fundraiser with that, and Site Council has elected to donate $1,000 every year of that money to the eighth grade promotion party, with the idea if they raise any more than $1,000, that can go towards scholarshiping kids who maybe can't afford to participate in the promotion or who need clothing for that activity. And then the final one was done by Scott Huckins, and it was our first annual free throw-a-thon, where he raised $1,100, and that's all off kids shooting free throws. And that money will go to purchase specific PE equipment that we don't have at Mark Twain, things that maybe make it PE a little bit more personalized and not so focused on the team sport aspect, but the individual fitness aspect. So he did that as some seed money to get going on that project. Under student successes and accomplishments, you'll notice that under the third bullet down, we have Junior Olympics Emily Koch. And what she did was she competed against college-age kids in the National Shooting Association and placed in the top 10. Because she's an eighth grader, she was also heavily recruited by colleges, who can talk with her as an eighth grader but cannot talk with her as a ninth grader. And so it really opened up her eyes as to the possibilities that are out there with her skills. So we thought that was kind of an interesting fact. If you look under the art program, Shannon Chandler has done an outstanding job in terms of giving our students opportunities in the world of art. And we do have a state winner in the PGE awareness contest, but that will be announced at an assembly on May 22nd, so we don't want to spoil that surprise. And that student's artwork will be featured in a calendar, and as well as these other students who placed in the teen art show, which is continuing through all of May, if you'd like to view their artwork. In our science program, we saw the addition of Mr. Jamsa to our staff this year. He has single-handedly revitalized the whole science program at Mark Twain. His enthusiasm and ability to think outside the box is at times really overwhelming. And for a person who likes to think outside the box, I think that says something. He, every time I turn around, he's got another great idea that's coming down the pike. And so, for instance, today, we did have our AMZI assembly, which we got as recognition for receiving the most enthusiastic science award for a middle school at the regional science competition that was at Portland State. So he had a mini-science fair today for the seventh graders, and they're already excited about their science projects for next year and talking about working on them over the summer.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Yeah, it's really exciting. And then he's also set up two community fundraisers, or two community service opportunities, two at the Oregon Garden this year, where all of our eighth graders are going to help with the various projects. And one of the service learning projects happens after the kids promote, so they come back for the next week. And on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, they'll be doing three community activity, well, one community activity and two additional learning opportunities. One, they'll be going to AMZI, and then the third day, they'll be climbing Mount St. Helens. Not the full hike, just a partial hike. And so, who would think that 58th graders would want to come back after they promoted to continue to spend time with us? And we were pretty impressed with that. And also, Mr. Jamsa was responsible for our school adopting the Western Pond Turtle as an endangered native local species. And there was some heavy campaigning going on by kids as to which endangered local species we should adopt. But I guess the turtle won, and he'll be next to Victor Viking, I guess. And then testing and curriculum and educational opportunities. We just concluded the district writing assessment. We decided that we wanted to really create a tone of seriousness for this exam and impress upon students that this is an important measure for their success for high school, and that it does matter, and that there's a connection between what they're doing now and high school graduation. And so, after we got through the first round of testing, we decided that if we made it a school-wide effort, not just a language department issue, that that might help students and their parents recognize the seriousness of the activity. So we created a special schedule where on Tuesday, students were in with their advisory group teachers for about 98 minutes. Prior to that day, they had been working in their language arts classes on the pre-writing and the brainstorming, and then the teachers were able to distribute all of those to the advisory teachers. Kids went into that advisory session. We fed them. We have a great community member, Sue Rivers, who is partnering with us. She got a lot of food donated to feed the kids, because it occurred around 9:30, and we know that they are usually hungry by then. Took about a 10-minute food break for them, and then they wrote for the rest of the 90 minutes. And it was, the school was quiet. We had high attendance that day. Kids took it seriously. And all the advisory teachers, who are not language arts teachers, could see the kind of work that goes into producing a work sample. So we're interested to see what those scores look like, just in terms of the quality and kids taking it seriously. They knew it was a serious day. We received a grant in partnership with Mount Angel, both the middle school and Kennedy High School and Silverton High School, for next year. And we're going to be busing probably 30 kids a semester over to the high school to take part in a mini occupational survey class. It will not include the auto shop, but it will include small engines, woodworking, and metals. And the kids will also have an opportunity to participate in FFA. The grant is contingent upon the idea that we'll be able to fund it the year after, and so we were already coming up with plans on how we can set aside money for that one period of FTE. The grant pays for the one period of FTE at the high school level. It pays for busing, and it also pays for advisory stipend or for our kids to participate. When we were forecasting, we were not sure how many students might be interested in this. We were only opening it up to eighth graders, and we have about 150 eighth graders. Next year's will be about 150 eighth graders. We had 60 kids said that they wanted to participate in that class. So it definitely shows that our students are asking for more hands-on elective experience. We've been able to pilot Read 180 as well with partnering with the high school. They had some slots opened, and I had eight or nine eighth graders who I thought, boy, they would really benefit from this, and they were also mature enough to be able to go to the high school for a period of time. And because of the success that we've had with the Read 180 for those kids, I believe I'll have enough money in our title funding at the end of this year to purchase the middle school version for our students and have that program at the middle school. I'm hoping to be able to purchase 30 licenses, so that should serve a good percentage of our population that need that intensive additional reading support. And then it builds for the high school level, so it's a middle school version of that program.
Can you explain that program a little bit?
Sure. Read 180 is a program that the high school adopted probably seven years ago, and it's a computer-based reading intervention program, but it really is broken out into three philosophies or three stations. The first one is whole-group instruction, and usually the instruction involves nonfiction reading. And then the kids break out into small-group instruction, where they work on the more specifics of how to read for information, how to figure out what the argument is, those kinds of finer details to reading. And then they also have a computer section of Read 180, where the students are actively engaged on the computer doing tasks, whether it's pronouncing vocabulary words that are recorded for the teacher to review, to spelling tests, to taking quick tests to check for comprehension. And so, we've had great success with it at the high school. Over the seven years that we've had kids in that program, the kids that failed to thrive are kids who usually have attendance issues. It makes a real difference for their reading abilities. So knowing that success, we wanted to kind of mirror that at the middle school. And then, we've also piloted the TurnItIn.com, which is, again, piggybacking off the high school. And that's a website where students submit their projects or presentations to this website that helps them find not only their grammar and sentence errors, but also shows them where maybe they have plagiarized a portion of their work, usually unintentionally, because they don't know how to cite sources correctly. And so what we found is that in this last four weeks that we've used it, it really makes kids understand what plagiarism is at this level. It's not enough to say, "Put it in your own words," because they think they put it in their own words, and then it pops up purple, and they can change it. And so we're excited that we're training them for this piece. We think that the Mark Twain kids will be a step ahead when they get to high school and have to navigate, what does that mean? My teacher's telling me you have to submit this. I don't know what it is. And so, all the eighth graders have done that this year. I talked about the Mount St. Helens and the AMZI experience with Mr. Jamsa. The next two things I'm really excited about. We have a group of churches in the area, probably five or six different churches, who've been meeting with me to talk about putting together an after-school activities program. And they're going to base it at the Lutheran Church up the hill from Mark Twain, and it's targeted for seventh and eighth grade students. They will be offering after-school activities and tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning in the fall. And it will be a partnership where we're providing them with the homework information, what was done in class that day. They will help kids with their papers. They'll have laptops there. A lot of our students are requesting to stay late after school so that they can access the computers, which oftentimes they don't have the staff to facilitate. And then they'll also have times to feed them and have structured supervised activities for those kids. So we've already kind of gotten the word out, because they're going to start a food service program for the summer, but they're actually gonna start it tomorrow, where they provide our kids with free food after school, so kind of like an after-school snack. And we have an art contest going on to come up with a logo and a campaign for them that Ms. Chandler's running. So we're very excited about the additional opportunity to keep our kids safe and engaged in an activity that, you know, some kids don't do sports, and they don't have a home to go, a place to go home to in the afternoon that's supervised. And then finally, we have a community garden that is in the infancy stages. We've had several organizations approach us in the last couple of weeks about putting in a garden at Mark Twain, where we can have its kids in charge of that garden, but also using the produce that comes out of there to supplement our food services, the solid bar, or run some kind of student food program, where the kids are making recipes out of what they grow. I can't imagine what this could look like. They were talking about tiered gardening and ripping out fields. I'm like, well, we're not gonna rip out a field, but they're very enthusiastic. And so I'm excited to see what that is going to emerge into, and invite you to come and take a look once we get going. And then finally, there's some upcoming events here. Most importantly, our eighth grade promotion is on June 8th at the high school, and that will begin at 6:30. Are there any questions?
The after-school thing that's gonna be next year, can any kids go to that, or is it gonna be?
They are targeting it for just seventh and eighth grade kids, so any kid in seventh and eighth grade from any school can go, but they really don't want to get into the whole daycare.
Yeah, no, it's not limited to kids who have trouble.
No, any kid can go.
Oh, cool. That's great. That's really, that's good.
And we've talked about how can they access the school website so they can, like, Mr. Jamsa has lessons for every day posted, and if a kid missed a worksheet or a film clip, he has it all posted, so they can help kids with that.
So I'm sure different churches taking turns going in there, or they all?
They're gonna house it at the Lutheran Church, since it's just closer to the campus, but they're all putting in resources. Volunteers, a coordinator, the funding for the laptops and the different equipment they might need. So it's really a cross-community effort.
That's wonderful. Appreciate you working with the kids and pressing upon them the importance of what they're doing today and how it prepares them for the future. It's really hard at that age to really see the big picture. So, hope that continues.
Yeah, I'm sure it will. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Linda Brown, step away.
Let's start with the Goldenrod Form first. This is our special education report card that ODE puts out each year. And I kind of put the numbers beside it so I can walk you through it. So if you look at number one on the front, first page, we're looking at the number of special education students that graduated. In that area, we haven't met the state standard of 65%. We're at 46.5%. So that would be something that we continue to strive to get our special ed kids to graduate from high school. Then if you look down to number two, timeline for eligibility. Once, we get consent for an evaluation, and we have that date. We have 60 school days to get that process finished, and we missed two of the students that we didn't get that process done. So that's the area I'm really monitoring, and Marauders does a nice job of making sure everybody knows when things are due. If you look over at number three, the students included in a regular class, 80% or more of the day. The state target is 70%, but we are at 74.7%. So that really tells us that we're a district that really does a lot of mainstreaming with our special ed kids. But then, when you look at number four, we do have 15.3% of our kids are either in the SLP or basic skills class. So we also have kids that really need that intensive support, so we're kind of on both sides of the aisle for that. So any questions on the front page? Move right along.
Well, what's your take on this information? These are great numbers. The state has a target. What's reality?
The reality is we take one kid at a time, do what's best for them, and if we meet the targets, yay for us. If not, yay for the kid. It's interesting that in special ed we're supposed to be so individualized, but yet we're kind of given these quotas.
See, in reality, then you're focusing on what the kid needs and not looking at the numbers.
Yeah. Five on the next page on the inside, we talk about the percentage of kids that are participating. So we're doing pretty good in that area. I would highlight down at the bottom where it says 9.6%. We have 9.6% of our kids that are taking extended assessment. So that, the extended assessment is the softer Kinder Oaks assessment for really low-involved kids. Number six talks about AYP. We're getting really, really close, but, you know, one or two kids at a school makes us not meeting AYP. The next area talks about post-secondary outcomes. I get the joy every year about this time of calling the kids that graduated last year and to see what they've done or what they've accomplished. And it's been really interesting. One of the things I keep hearing is, we really like all the help we got at the high school, but we almost got too much help, because now that we're in college, we're not quite sure how to do a lot of this stuff. So it's like, you want to support them so they can graduate, which they really need to do, but then they also need to learn those skills. So it's a careful balancing act to make sure we're doing both sides.
So what are some of these students doing?
Going to like Shemekka to, looking for jobs, that type of thing. And, yeah, it's just been really neat that they said we really cared and nurtured them, but they're not really independent yet. So I think that that's also an area where the parents need to be stepping in and providing their young adults some guidance and direction, too. Going over to the next page, you look at number eight and number nine. This is called the disproportionality. So one of the things we have to do is we have to look at the number of kids that are Hispanic or Afro-American. And we need to look at the percentage of kids in each ethnic group to see if we're over-identifying anybody, maybe Hispanic children into communication. So we would look at each of those subgroups. And this is another area where we just work with the kids and do what's best for the children, and then we look at the data later, and we're doing all right. School districts like Woodburn have problems with this because of their high Hispanic count, so. so, just something that we need to keep track of. And then number nine, parent survey. They sent this survey out in the '06-'07 school year, and like I shared last year, we don't know what the questions were, we didn't know who they sent them to, and we're not really sure what 41.5 percent means that heads on the report card. Think we're scheduled to have ours go out next year again, so... So that's our district report card.
That seems pretty ridiculous. You don't even know what they're being asked. How can you use this as a gauge? You're above the state.
We've done our legal requirement. Okay, number, go to the green page. Because I'm kind of a gal that likes numbers, I like to look at our special ed numbers every year and kind of compare them to past years. So if you look at the top row of information, the first column on the left side is the state's special ed percentage. So that comes right from ODE. So that's the percentage of special ed kids in the state. The next column over is the Silver Falls special ed percentage in each area. And I think it was really interesting that our percentage went down, but also the state ODE went down, too. Our census count, the next line over on December 1, we take account of all the kids that are special ed eligible on that day, and this year, we had 485 kids on December 1. But to me, the most important number in this whole thing is the next column over where I look at the total number of special ed kids served. So if you go down to the asterisk, we currently have 500 active special ed kids on our rosters right now. We have 101 kids that were eligible and in school for special ed, they were in schools in September, and since then have moved. So that's 101 kids that we supported and helped provide programming, they're in and out, so 101 of those kids.
How do you get out of the program?
There's basically two ways. You move out of the district and you go someplace, or you're found not eligible. So I could look down to that number a little bit more to get that, the specifics, but it's a big bunch of kids coming in and going.
So it's just transfers primarily?
Yep. Students found not eligible, we did evaluations, taking time from our staff, and find, we found 14 of those kids not eligible. And then we still have 31 evaluations still in the hopper. If you go back up to the top, special ed fund count, when Jan, there's this one-page document talks about our funding. For special education, we're getting funding for the equivalent of 389.3 kids. So that's how much, when you talk about waiting, we're actually bringing into our general budget. But then you see our census count and our total number of kids served, there's kind of a big difference there. Then I also brought in just the total number of students attending Silver Falls based on our October count, so, it's kind of is what it is. It's nice to see the numbers and see where we kind of fall. The next area talks about the number of special ed kids or the percentage of special ed kids in other school districts in our area. So we're kind of in the middle of the pack there. Then if you look at the very bottom, I really look at kind of the subgroups, I wanted to provide the number of entire district kids in foster care, transfers, homeless, poverty, ELL kids. Then I also wanted to see how many special ed kids were also in those same subgroups. So that's kind of something I really want to keep track of. A lot of times, we perceive things that are there, but when I look at the data, it's not actually there. The one that really surprised me was foster homes. I get called all the time for foster care kids, and they come and go. When Sandy looked at this data last week, there were only seven kids. But if you go up to the 101 kids, there's kids within that, they're in that foster care, in and out type of system. So just kind of snapshot what we're doing.
Can you explain the number of transferring students? Those numbers are pretty big.
Mm-hmm.
What does that really mean?
That means inter-district transfer kids from Salem-Kaiser or Malala, the total number of kids transferred in. And then we had just 19 of those kids were special ed. That's one of the things I'm really keeping track of, is the kids that...
That's total, then, total kids?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. But I'm really keeping an eye on the special ed kids, because we don't get any additional funding, and if we already have a program in place, we're just adding one kid to the group, that works. But if they need more like basic skills or structured learning program, that's a totally different conversation.
So you're monitoring that, then?
Yep. And then the next page is my bragging sheet. I sat down to think about the year and whatever, all the things we've done. One of the things I really strive to do is to build capacity within our district, and it's really fun to build capacity when you're using ESD money for it. So that's what we do. One of the things we did this year is, we have our own psycho, school psychologist. Last year, we shared her with other districts, but we have Jennifer that's on board for our school psych at Point Six, and she's really helped us refine our evaluation process. Jennifer Bingham is also the traumatic brain injury support person, expert in our area now, a neat grant that we got through ESD. Jennifer Bingham and Annie Toyer are now mat trained. We have a couple of teachers, Sheri and Lisa, that have completed the Irland Vision Training, and that's kind of a, kind of an old-fashioned way of special ed, way back in the 80s, we did some work on. If we gave students some written materials and put different color overlays, like yellow or blue, sometimes it'd help the students read a little bit better. So we're using that technique for some kids that have some vision difficulties. Kind of a low-tech thing, you give them a piece of paper and you give them an overlay, and for some kids, that really makes a big difference. So, got that training done. We had a couple assistants learn how to use the factor train, factor curriculum, which is intended to support kids with autism. Lori, Baker, and Sue Gerard, and I took the Oregon Education Guide for Autism, and we looked at our program to see what we had in place, what we need to refine, which will help us build into our own autism program next year, because we have both Lori and Sue on board, so that's great. Dana and Tanis, they're both basic skills teachers, they've gone to some augmented communication classes. The high school special ed team's working on developing a life skills program out in the house, so that's really fun. The next one talks about relationships with Mount Angel Development Program, Rock West, Shankla, and Goodwill. Because of the state legislature this year mandated that we needed to have a more thoughtful approach for adult special ed kids, about 18 to 21, instead of building, developing our own program, I'm contracting back out with these other agencies. And so it's been a nice collaboration with us, DED Service, and be it Rock West or Mount Angel Development Program. So we have six kids that next year are going to be fit into one of those programs. So it's kind of a nice way to use the resources in our area. We also have initiated the Medicaid survey and Medicaid billing system in hopes of getting additional money for our school nurses. Well, this is a big one. On the back page, you talk about special ed file complaint, compliance. We have to do our special ed file reviews every year, there's like 200 elements in each IUP that you need to look at, and we've been 100 percent compliant in that the last two or three years. So that's a huge thing for our teachers, and it really tells us that the data system that we're using for the special ed kids, it's really helping, helps us have more accurate information. We also met the requirements on child finds, significant disproportionality, discipline of federal placements. Also finished the process to make our special ed manual onto a disk. It's about six binders full of stuff, and everything you ever wanted to know in special ed, now it's on one little disk. We have worked with four student teachers this year, three from Willamette University and one for Governor's University. We've been a part of the collaborative process with both Willamette University and Western Oregon to help those special ed teacher programs better understand what's going on in the trenches and the classrooms. So, it's been nice to be able to do that. We've helped with the regional advisory board as we look at how regional services are going to be rolled out. And then one of the biggest victories we have is Marla's, because she is so thoughtful about our reports, making sure they're accurate, we're 100 percent compliant with our special ed files. So that's, not very many districts have that, so that's some of the things we've done this year.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate your work. It's a tough job.
Any questions?
I do have one question about the, our relationship with Mount Angel Development Program, Shankla, Goodwill, and so on. Do we use our resources or dollars?
Yeah, we have a contract with them. So, for example, a kid that goes to the Mount Angel Development Program, the whole contract is around $4,000 or $5,000. So it's a pretty cost-effective way to support them. We have a contract, I do the case management, so it's real nice. For about the money we get for special ed kids, about the same amount we're paying for those. So it's kind of a wash for that.
And a good opportunity for those kids.
Yeah, and you can give a bigger variety of stuff, not just doing it on our own, but looking at these other areas, too. So, kind of neat.
Thanks. Any other questions for Linda?
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, board of course this evening.
Yeah, just real quickly, I was able to run up to Silver Crest one day, a couple weeks ago, and fun things going on up there. The kindergarten, kindergarten class was working on a variety of different things in groups, reading groups and things like that. One of the boys read a little story to me, which was kind of fun, really good reader. Third graders were getting ready to take some, take some Oaks tests, the teacher was kind of coaching them before they went in to work on their Oaks. First and second grade class, they were, Mrs. Glover's, they were working on a lot of reading, reading stuff going on, most reading time in the mornings, but the kids were working in groups and working really hard. It's neat to see the kids when they, you know, even independently, in their independent groups, working and not just messing around. Mrs. Zinjanko's class was working on some language arts stuff, the kids were really engaged, and they were working individually in some, I forget what she called them, it slips my mind now, but some individual, or, you know, independent work that they were doing, that they were really into. She also showed me some of the stuff they were doing for their international market thing that we got cards for, some really, it sounds like a really neat thing they got going. Lots of signs, the kids are, picked a country and they're going to make some food from that country and set up a booth, and Mark told us about it the last time he was here, I think, too. So, that sounds like it's going to be a really neat thing. Mr. Feller was, had the kids playing like a game spelling, with spelling words to practice for their spelling test, and they were really into that, it was fun to see. Sean Poole, great math lessons as usual, he's a good teacher, lots of good teachers up there. So Sean Poole was teaching some math stuff, which I always like to hear, because I don't understand what's going on anyway, and I always like to learn a little math. But anyway, some really neat things happening up at Silver Crest, and it was a fun, fun morning, so.
Thanks, Bill. Any other reports? Okay, do we have any correspondence? Open second, second audience with visitors. Anybody like to address a board yet this evening? Okay, we'll go on to action items. First is approved, you recommended a student and adult meal prices for 2012, 13th school year. Do you have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Student second, any further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Coz, motion carries. Next item is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement, changes in one-year memorandum of understanding between Silver Falls School District and the Silver Falls Education Association. Anyone have a question? Let's go ahead and see if we can get a motion in a second before we have discussion. Do you have a motion?
I move for that we approve the collective bargaining agreement.
Second. Second. Okay, anyone have a question?
Sure. My question is on the memorandum of understanding, and item number one, and then item number two, there's the word, let me just read it, it says, "Each association member's work year will be reduced equally by two unpaid days during the school year 2011-2012." I'm just, I don't understand the word equally there, and so I guess that's my question, is what does equally refer to?
Well, it first refers to their FTE. So if we got .5 FTE or 1.0 FTE, it's equal to their FTE. And second, it's, it applies to all licensed, or all, all teachers within the collective bargaining agreement. In other, it doesn't exclude retirees, or it doesn't include, or doesn't exclude anybody that wouldn't otherwise be within the collective bargaining agreement. So, counselors, teachers, retirees, any, any groups that may be interpreted otherwise. I think it's really more for clarification than anything else.
So does the equally, I guess, if I'm understanding you right there, really means all and like prorata?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? That's your question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Coz, motion carries. All right, and this time, go ahead and adjourn record session, and then we'll go back, go into executive session for RS 192, that's 660, exempt public records. Thanks for coming. Enjoy the session.
Do you want to extend that?
I just have to say thank you for having me.